Counsel, in order to make good use of our time, I want to call the workshop to order. This is a regularly scheduled or a scheduled workshop held this evening on August the 13th, 2024. We are gathered in a workshop for information regarding impact fees. And we are joined this evening by someone from Tischler-Bice who Mr. Merriman will introduce us to. Thank you. I understand you've just jumped off a plane and came straight here. So we appreciate the effort and thank you for the work that you have done to bring us to this point. And I will turn it over to the administrator at this point.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. This is the culmination of a number of months of work that has been performed by Tischler-Bice. With us tonight is Carson Bice. He's the president of Tischler-Bice. And he and I have worked together in York County when we went through that impact fee analysis. And I'm going to let him take a moment tonight to introduce his firm and what they've done here in South Carolina, and then certainly what they've done for us this evening. And again, to make sure that we get the best use of our time, I'm not going to gild a little any further. I'm going to introduce Carson and let him run. So Carson, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Counsel. It's my pleasure to be here with you guys tonight. I'm going to walk you through the impact fee study. I'm going to take sort of, you know, the high overview. And if you guys want to get into the details, we can certainly do that. Make sure this is working. So our firm, Tischler-Bice, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland and Boise, Idaho. And we're the national leader in conducting impact fees and fiscal and economic impact analysis. We've done more of that work than any firm in the country. And you can see here, we've done considerable amount of work related to impact fees in South Carolina, again, more than any other firm. And impact fees are increasingly popular in the state of South Carolina. And I'm going to talk a little bit about impact fees in general for the first few slides and then go into the details of the draft study that we prepared for the city. So impact fees are a one-time payment, and they're designed to offset new developments' impact on your infrastructure systems. We can't, you know, use impact fees for operations or maintenance or replacement of capital facilities. We also can't co-mingle the money into our general fund. We have to account for it separately, which I'll talk about here in a second. It's not a tax. And the reason I think it's important that we distinguish between a tax and a fee is that, you know, taxes are generally revenue raising in nature. And depending on the state, you may have to go to the voters to get approval for taxes. There's no relationship between the amount that you pay in taxes, whether it's property tax or sales tax or income tax, relative to the amount of services you consume or the amount of infrastructure you consume. And a fee is very different. A fee is usually designed to cover the cost of something. So for instance, you know, your building permit fees or your site plan review fees are designed to cover the direct and indirect costs associated with reviewing those plans and issuing that permit. And impact fees are no different. In fact, impact fees have to meet a more stringent requirement. There's three prongs of a legal test that impact fees have to meet. First, we have to demonstrate nexus or need. So through the study, we have to document that the community has been growing, that growth is likely to continue in the future, and that growth is going to necessitate the need for us to expand our infrastructure systems if we want to maintain current levels of service. We also have to show benefit. We call it the benefit test. And we show benefit in two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, meaning that we just don't collect dollars today and wait 10 or 15 or 20 years to spend them. We have to spend them in a reasonable timeframe. And a lot of the impact fee acts or enabling statutes put limits on how long you have to spend the money. And I'll go into a little more detail about that when I talk about the South Carolina statute. But we also show benefit geographically. So the idea here is that we don't collect money in one area of a community but build all the infrastructure in another. Now, in a city the size of Greer, we typically don't have to get into establishing collection districts or benefit areas, et cetera, whatever you want to call them, because you are providing typically a citywide level of service. So it doesn't matter where the fee is paid because you're benefiting citywide. When we have to get into zones or benefit areas, it's typically with the county. It's typically where, like in Lancaster County, it's a tale of two counties where there's no development in the south, but all of it is to the north. And so that's where we're focusing our infrastructure investment. So we just can't collect, for instance, a school impact fee in the south and then build all the school capacity in the north because I won't receive any benefit for it. And then finally, we have to show proportionality. That's why the fee schedule that you see in the report and you'll see in this presentation distinguishes between land uses. So we distinguish between single-family and multifamily because typically in most communities, single-family homes have more people, more vehicle trips, if we're doing a road impact fee, for instance. And so their fee is higher than a multifamily. Retail, if we're talking about transportation, generates more vehicle trips than office and industrial. So their fee has to be commensurate with that demand. So that's what we mean by proportionality. I'm not going to spend too much time on methodology, but the way we calculate impact fees is we look to the past, the present, or the future. So when we look to the past, we call that a cost recovery or a buy-in, and that's where you've oversized facilities. For instance, you know, if a community has oversized a wastewater treatment plant, it's got 10 million gallons a day of capacity and is currently operating at six, the fee is designed to recoup that remaining 4 million gallons of investment, so to pay yourself back. When we look to the present, which is by far the most popular impact fee method, it's basically a snapshot of your current levels of service. It's very formulaic in terms of defining. For instance, we have so many acres of parkland per person, it costs us $50,000 to buy an acre of land, et cetera, and we calculate the fee that way. And then finally, when we look to the future, we call that a plan-based approach. We see that a lot with roads, water and sewer, where there's an adopted master plan and there's a funding plan in place. The fee may be higher, but there's some downsides to it in some cases. So if the fee revenue doesn't come in and the amount's expected, you still have to build the infrastructure, it's just now you have to come up with the money from the general fund or some other source of revenue. So impact fees in South Carolina, there are 29 enabling statutes currently. Governing impact fees in South Carolina is one of the states that has an impact fee statute. There are a few things about it that are very similar with other acts, and there's a few things that are different. So in terms of similarities, you know, like I mentioned earlier, it states that the impact fee revenue has to be maintained in an interest-bearing account, and you've got to publish an annual report. One caveat in South Carolina is it does have some time limits on when you spend the money. So, and there's a lot of confusion about this among cities and counties in South Carolina where they think that you've got three years from the day I hand you my check for impact fees to spend the money. No, it's three years from the date of the planned improvement. So if you're planning on building a facility in 2027, you've got until 2030 to spend the money. Okay? So that's very different than a lot of acts. You have to do a conference review every five years. Any change to the fees require an updated study. And then the interesting thing about South Carolina, and this is the only act in the country that has this, but it does require an analysis of the fee amounts on the impact or its impact or the effect of the fees on the availability of affordable housing. But it gives you no guidance. It doesn't define what affordable housing is. It doesn't define what the acceptable limits is or acceptable limits are. It doesn't provide for any actions for amelioration. So for instance, if it's determined that the fees will have an effect on affordable housing, it doesn't say you have to roll them back till it's to a certain percentage. It just says you have to go through the analysis. That's very unique. One thing about impact fees, and we'll talk about this when we get into the methodologies, is we have to guard against new development paying twice. Once through the impact fee and then again through future revenues or, in the case of the first example, site-specific contributions, which are usually determined by a development agreement. So for instance, well, let's talk about the second and third first. These are the kind of credits that are baked into the methodology already. So the idea here is that if we've got existing or future debt service, and I'm going to pay you the impact fee, but I'm also going to pay sales tax or I may pay property tax that's going to retire debt for the same thing I paid you the impact fee for, we have to have a credit in the methodology. Same thing for dedicated revenues. If you have a dedicated property tax or dedicated sales tax that goes to public safety or parks or roads or what have you, it's probably likely we're going to have to give a credit within that methodology because you're going to pay the fee, but you're also going to generate property tax and sales tax for the same thing. Now, the first one is not baked into the methodology, and this happens on a case-by-case basis as development approvals or development proposals come into the city. So for instance, if we're going to build a fire station and the developer donates land for the fire station and there's a land component to the impact fee, then we need to make the developer whole through a development agreement because they've given you something for which the impact fee is geared to recover as well. So those are typically worked out, as I mentioned, in development agreements. Now, getting into the fee study itself, as part of that nexus, we have to estimate residential and non-residential growth. And you can see here, we're projecting over the next 10 years, an increase of about 18,500 additional persons and a total of almost 7,900 new housing units over the next 10 years. From a non-residential perspective, we are projecting a total of about 1,400 additional jobs, and that equates to about 613,000 additional square feet of non-residential activity. So let's go through each individual fee category, and I'm not going to go through all the level of service tables, et cetera. I'm just going to sort of hit the high points here. So parks and recreation, there are three components to that. There are neighborhood parks, sports complexes, and indoor recreation centers. We are taking what we call the incremental expansion or consumption-based approach, which is that looking at the present, that snapshot of our current levels of service. We're allocating the demand for parks to population only, and we have to include credits to guard against double payment for the 2020 geo-bond for the sports complex as well as the future IRPB bond as well, because they're going to generate revenue that goes to retire that debt. This is the 10-year Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Capital Improvement Plan. So we're showing a total cost of $98 million, but the growth-related or the impact fee-eligible cost is only about $6 million. And one of the tenets of impact fees is we can't use impact fees to correct existing deficiencies. And what I mean by that is, is if our level of service for parks is, let's say, three acres per person, but we want to have an ultimate level of service of seven acres per person, we can't base that fee on the seven acres unless we have a funding plan in place. And that's exactly what the city has. So, and I'll get into that here in a second. So these are the draft impact fee amounts. So at the bottom of the table in green, the impact fee amount for a single-family home is $2,333 or $35. The multifamily, the maximum supportable, is $1,378. Now, this is our cash flow. So you can see here that the total costs are $109 million. The growth-related cost is $17.3 million, and we're going to generate impact fee revenue of about $16.7 million. So the non-impact fee funding is $92 million, and that's where that bond comes in. The city is leveraging bond dollars in order to enhance the level of service, and impact fees are going to contribute to some of that cost, but both new and existing taxpayers are also going to be contributing through the bond. Now, moving on to police, there are two components there. It's the bricks and mortar facilities, also police vehicles. We'd use that consumption-based approach. And for the demand, we're allocating police costs to population from the residential perspective and then non-residential vehicle trips for the non-residential demand. And here are the 10-year capital improvement plan for vehicles. There's 1.9 million in eligible impact fee cost. And because we use that snapshot approach for the vehicles, the costs equal the revenue. And when we look at the maximum supportable fee, the single-family fee is $484, the multifamily fee is $286. And then moving on to the non-residential, retail has the highest fee per 1,000 square feet at $542, followed by office, institutional, and then finally industrial at $184 per 1,000 square feet. Then when we look at the revenue for this consumption-based approach, the projected revenue is $3.7 million. The projected expenditures, based on your existing level of service, is also $3.7 million. So there is no need for the general fund or another revenue source to contribute to this capital plan. Moving on to fire, there's two components here, stations as well as apparatus. We use the consumption-based methodology. Again, demand factors are population and non-residential trips. There's also credit for the future 2025 bond payment. And here is our capital plan, where we have a total cost of $64.8 million, or excuse me, $64.6 million, and the impact fee-eligible costs are $8.5 million. Maximum supportable fee, shown in green, the single-family units are 1,044. The multifamily units are $616 per unit. From a non-residential perspective, again, retail has the highest fee at approximately $1,169 a square foot, followed by office, institutional, and then finally industrial. And then when we look at the cash flow for fire, we see over the 10 years here that the projected expenditures over the 10-year period are $20 million, but the projected impact fee revenue is 7.9. So the non-impact fee revenue is $12.6 million, and the majority of that is, again, the bond-financed And then finally, public safety, that's a plan-based approach. Again, population and non-residential vehicle trips are used. There is a credit for the 2024 bond issuance. And here's our 10-year capital improvement plan there or here on this slide. It's $35.6 million. The impact fee-eligible cost is $11.6. And the draft fees are $1,371 for a single-family unit, $809 for a multifamily unit, and just like the rest of the public safety, retail has the highest fee at $1,536 per 1,000 square feet, followed by office and institutional uses, and then finally industrial. And then when we look at this cash flow over the 10 years, it's $35.6 million. The projected revenue is $10.4 million, and the non-impact fee financing is $25.1 million, which again is funded through that debt issuance. So what does that mean in terms of the full freight for these four impact fee categories? That's summarized right here. The maximum supportable fee for a single-family unit is $5,234. The multifamily is $3,089. And the non-residential fees, $3247 per 1,000 square feet for retail, $2349 per 1,000 square feet for office, $2319 per 1,000 square feet for institutional, and $1,102 for industrial uses. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have. I know that was a lot to absorb in a short period of time.
Mr. Merriman, any overview from your standpoint before we open it up from the floor?
No, sir. I think, you know, in four years of working with Counsel, I know how you like to get into the question and answer part of it as much as anything. And you've had the study for a week now, I think. So between Carson's presentation and y'all having the study in advance, I was hoping for more dialogue so we can get, staff can get a direction from you on how to proceed. So with that, I think questions is probably the best way to approach.
Perfect. With that, then, Counsel, I'll open the floor for questions, discussions, conversation.
There was a couple of things that just popped up in the very beginning, but did I read the one bullet point correctly that says that the funds must be contained in an interest-bearing account? So the first year, I guess, on December 31st, we've held these funds. Do they have to automatically go into that account?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we found an institution that said, basically, it's a CD and you can get 5% right now, no problem. So if we said, on December 31st, whatever we've taken in, we're putting in this account, what happens to that interest?
If you put it in...
We put it in, we put it in for 12 months, and it draws 5%.
You would put that back into the impact fee account.
Okay. So I guess the thing that I need to know, besides all the other questions I've written down, tell me, and Andy, maybe you can help him, how we can use these tools to reduce millage?
Well, it's going to be predicated on the dollars collected, right? And as you can see through the presentation, a portion of all the dollars collected can actually go towards direct debt service on the four Greer projects. But what it does is it provides capacity in our regular budgeting process to allow for us to then look at all of our revenue streams and make millage adjustments according. So that's what this, by and large, to keep it very simple, we know that a portion of this can go for the four Greer projects. So we can automatically take that off the top and pay debt service on that. And if it equals a mill, if it equals two mills, three mills, whatever, we can make those adjustments. But what it also does is it provides us flexibility in the years to come on these other projects that we know are going to happen. And the good news about it is this, and Carson, correct me if I'm wrong, but we collect these fees and we know that, you know, like, for instance, you saw new headquarters up there for $17 million. Well, if we're not going to plan on constructing that until 2028, you know, we don't apply those funds until 2028, and we have three years in which to spend them, so they can sit in this interest-bearing account with the intent of paying for that when that time comes, right? So what this, it does two things in my mind. One, it provides a direct source of revenue for the four Greer projects, the 14 mills in particular, but it also provides flexibility in our budgeting process for other capital needs where we would have had to come out of pocket on through our regular general fund.
Mr. Bice, you addressed this in your presentation. If you'll just go back a couple of slides to where we've got your analysis for parks and recreation or for public service or whatever, you'll have a number in there that you said would be available.
Oh, the revenue projection?
For the revenue projection, yes.
Right. So I'm not sure what the question is. Sorry.
So you had it broken down into revenue expenditures and then non-impact fee funding. So that's an example, I think, of where Mr. Arrowood wants to know.
Yeah, exactly.
That funding would come from. That's it right there.
Right. I'll give you some context. So, you know, most local governments we work with around the country, you know, the capital budget's not the problem. It's the operating budget, right? Because most of the capital budget, usually capital budgets are 15 to 25% of the total budget, right? So impact fee revenue is almost found money, right? And to Mr. Merriman's point, by collecting, and I'm just going to use round numbers here. Let's just say you collect $50 million in impact fees over a 10-year period. Well, that frees up $50 million of other revenue that you can use to do roof replacements and road resurfacing and all these other things that you've been putting off. And also, the fact that you've got the impact fee revenue also means that you don't have to raise the capital millage as much because you do have this revenue source that is likely to come in.
Well, I understand that point. But in the very beginning, it says no co-mingling of the funds. And I would assume that intent meant, okay, you're going to keep your expenditures and your taxes the same, and this is for your planning on future growth?
Yes, sir.
And that's what these dollars are for?
Yes, sir. And so with the co-mingling...
What's the definition of co-mingling? Because obviously, if we build a water tank.
Right.
And we know that in five years, we need all of it. So that would be 100%. We would be able to take all of that impact fee for that water tank and build that entire water tank.
Depends. So if we were talking water and sewer, there may be several components to that. There may be, from the water side, there may be part of the fee that's for supply or source. So let's say...
Let me, please make it simple.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to make it simple. Co-mingling means we're just not going to collect the money and put it in the general fund. And you basically have to establish a park impact fee fund, a fire impact fee fund, a police impact fee fund. And you just need to account for the money separately. And your annual report can be as simple as a one-pager that says, we took in $1.2 million in fire impact fees and we spent $136,000 on a new ambulance. And our net, our balance going forward is X, and this is the interest we earned. So here's where we are in 2027. And it's as simple as that.
Which then, and I think, I understand where you're going, Mr. Arrowood, but what that does is it relieves pressure from our general fund, because we'd have to pay for that anyway, right? So whether we did it through the lease purchase program and we're making those annual payments to lease purchase, we no longer have to burden the lease purchase program or burden the general fund to buy those things because now we have a dedicated source of revenue to buy these capital things, which then will provide us more flexibility, to your point, to look at our overall millage, right? Because we did this with an IPRB, and we can find any source of revenue to pay the debt on this that allows us capacity in our general fund, put more money in fund balance year over year, and then use a fund balance appropriation to pay, to lower the millage, to pay that debt service. That's the beauty of this program is, and not to be crass about it, but Carson's exactly right, it's found money. And in that found money, we have capacity now in the general fund.
So to answer Jay's question is, you would reduce the millage out of general but not out of the impact?
Yeah, the impact fee is just something completely different. Because it's not tied to taxes. It's a separate fee. The taxes themselves, we can mess with based on projected revenues year over year. And that's where that provides us a little bit of capacity to then lower, not to, and see, this is just one of the tools. Because we also know that we're going to see just regular growth in the mill. We know that's going to happen. We're expecting accommodations and hospitality taxes to increase over time. So all of these things are, this is just another component of our flexibility in getting that millage back to where y'all want it to be.
It may be an oversimplification, but in some regards, you just mentioned the hospitality tax and accommodations tax, which are fees. So this is simply, in some regards, like adding four more fees essentially, but they're dedicated monies for what we've identified for them, just like the hospitality and accommodations tax in some regard.
And then they're structured very similarly, as much as they're restricted.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay. Others?
I just had one question. When it said it doesn't cover replacement, what does that entail?
Yeah, good question.
Like if a building's there, you can't tear it down and put another one there?
No, good question. So that is worth clarifying. So what it really means is we're not replacing, let's just use parks as an example, that we don't replace a dilapidated tennis court with impact fees with one tennis court, because that's basically replacing one for one.
Oh, okay. It's got to be bigger and better.
There's nothing that says you can't build three tennis courts to replace one, and 2/3 of that would be impact fee-eligible, right? Another example is if you're replacing a fire pumper, but all it is is a replacement and you're not increasing the fleet by one, that's not an impact fee-eligible expense.
Okay, yeah. I just knew that the plans are to replace an existing building, but not where it's at, but a bigger location in another place.
Yes. In fact, we do that a lot. We're working on it.
And just like the fire station, well, the learning, not the fire, down at Mitsubishi.
Oh, the Public Safety Training Center.
Yeah, Public Safety, you know, because that's there, but it's to replace it bigger and better. Is that it? Yeah, okay. And when we're talking about this, is there a set amount of interest that the company or the city is charged or...
No, it's whatever the go-in rate is that where you bank.
So it fluctuates.
Yeah, so it fluctuates, yes.
Okay, okay. Not a set, not a set interest. So it could be 10, it could be 15, it could be 30, whatever.
Right.
Ms. Albert, did you say that the city is charged interest?
No, isn't that correct? I mean, we are being charged interest on the line.
No, no, no. You would collect interest on the money.
Okay, I thought that's what you were saying.
Yeah, just like you would your taxes and your fund balance.
The money we're buying, the money... The money we're borrowing, we're being paid interest on that money?
No, no, no. The impact fee revenue that you, let's say that over, in year one, you collect a million dollars in park impact fee. And over year, that year, you got, you know, thirty-six thousand dollars in interest. So now you got a million thirty-six.
Well, I guess I was referring to like the hundred million or whatever the plans are to borrow or to use for this. Is there an interest rate set on that?
We do have an interest rate. And that's all calculated in the debt service we're paying anyway.
What is that?
Right, for the 2024s, it was like four point oh four percent.
Okay, so it varies, it's not a set?
Well-
Or is that one set?
That's the set on this one.
Thank you.
Carson, I got a question. Is the interest restricted as well with the general and impact fee fund? Is that interest restricted for same company uses?
So the fire impact fee interest, we go to the fire impact fee fund, et cetera.
And it's got to use the same way or exchange for growth?
Now, with those, since Mike asked that question, what, so you have a fire impact fee, that's one fee. The second fee is whatever else. Does that mean that right now we have to have, I think we've got-
You have to have four impact fee funds if you adopted this.
Okay, four counts.
Four counts. Yeah, four counts, sir.
Talking about not co-mingling is the different accounts. Okay, understanding that, gotcha.
And it's also worth noting that, you know, the fees that we're showing you, it says maximum supportable fee. So some communities choose not to adopt one hundred percent. Some choose to phase them in over a two-year period. Some will adopt eighty percent or what have you. Maximum supportable means you just can't say, "Well, we'd like to charge twenty-five hundred." You can only justify twenty-three, thirty-five. Another thing that's worth noting is with impact fees, you shouldn't be discriminating against land uses because you get into equal protection issues. And we work with a lot of clients that want to, for instance, adopt one hundred percent of the residential fees, but only adopt fifty percent of the non-residential fees or not adopt non-residential fees at all. Or say, like, we do a lot of work in Arizona and Colorado. Where sales tax is king for the cities. And so they want to charge a hundred percent of the industrial and office fees, but they want to discount the retail fees because they want to give them a break. And we shouldn't be doing that because that leads to lawsuits because of these equal protection issues. So any deductions or, excuse me, reductions need to be uniform through the land use categories.
Based on the percentage?
Right.
Okay, so if you're going to cut ten on a single family, you got to cut it across the line.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Andy, how does the, on this maximum supportable fee of twenty-three, thirty-five for a single family, what, under our annexation agreements, what are we asking, what do we?
Twenty-eight and change? Was that, that was based on, when Tisler Vice did the annexation fee study, we were charging, I think, twenty-eight. I think we bumped that to twenty-eight, almost twenty-nine hundred dollars per single family and then twenty-three maybe. And I can get a better answer for you for multi-fa- or a single family attached. And then maybe nineteen or two thousand for multifamily. But there were three different fees charged in the annexation agreements. But that study done had a different criteria than this one. This one is specifically tied to the state's impact fee statute.
And that's what determined the maximum supportable fee?
That, along with the credits for the IPRB, all of that stuff is rolled into this. So all of those assumptions and everything, just to kind of give you a little bit of a broader picture about this process in and of itself, is Tisler Vice engaged all of our department heads that have skin in this game for all of their existing capital needs. You know, there was a significant data gathering process for all the acres that we had and all the rolling stock that we've got. All of this stuff was all rolled into part of the study. So what you don't see in this was all of that background work that was parsed out to the nth degree by Tisler Vice to get us to this maximum supportable fee.
Mr. Vice, I think it would be fair to say that there are some that think of this as a way of slowing or controlling growth. But in your experience for the cities that you've worked with in South Carolina, I think it would probably be more appropriate to say that this is a way to address growth and ask those people that are longtime citizens to have some relief in terms of the new housing that's going up and that the true impact of having an impact fee is not to discourage growth as much as it is to have those people that are building new homes to participate in funding some of the infrastructure and programming that comes with that. So I guess in my experience, I don't know of any community at any level of impact fee has used this to reduce growth as much as it has to been to find a new funding source for new growth. Would that be a reasonable anticipation?
That is very accurate, Mayor. And, you know, we always forget that, or a lot of people forget that impact fees are actually a land use regulation that just happens to generate revenue. And, you know, I'm in my thirty-fourth year of doing this kind of work and I've never seen impact fees ever deter growth. And we currently have, I think it's about a hundred and six impact fee contracts right now and sixty-something of those are repeat clients. And most of those are multiple repeat clients. So they obviously wouldn't keep going to the well if impact fees were a deterrent for growth. And there's a reason development wants to locate in a community, whether it's residential development or non-residential development. You know, it's quality of life, it's transportation advantages, it's educated workforce. All sorts of factors go into why companies and people want to locate in a community. And the fact that you have impact fees do not deter growth.
And so just as a general comment, you've seen impact fees in South Carolina from as little as what to as much as what?
A good question. You know, we do a lot of different impact fees. You know, schools are the highest. I mean, most of the schools, given the fact that the districts here have to fund one hundred percent of the capital cost can be twelve, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars. Roads and water and sewer are the highest fees typically. On average, you know, road fees can be four or five thousand alone on a single-family house. Utility fees can also be that. So it just depends on what infrastructure categories you've included. We're not including roads, we're not including utilities. But usually, you know, I've seen them in smaller communities, you know, be two or three thousand dollars all the way up to, you know, in the twenties, right? Just depends.
Thank you. Others? Questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. I agree what, I agree in general what the mayor just said, that yes, this is people coming to Greer paying their way. But as a trained economist, I know that there is a point where, you know, once you hit that point, that's it. There is, you're not, the growth will either be stopped or slowed dramatically. Do you take that into your calculations when you're saying, when you're recommending or, I'm assuming this maximum supportable fee is just, it's hard numbers, it's a formula that you pick and put to- But is there any forecasting that you do, as an economist would, to figure out, you know, what is that number? You know, just because, and I'm assuming the maximum supportable fee, you take into account the existing income of folks that already live here, although they're not paying for it, but you're attracting that income level.
So you're asking a very complicated question. So the answer to the part about the forecast, no. And you are correct that if the fee were so high that it made you an outlier. And by outlier, I mean you would have to be thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars higher than anybody in the state to make, to get to that tipping point in our experience. And for instance, we do quite a few out in resort communities like Aspen and Vail and Crested Butte, places like that, what we call affordable housing linkage fees, where you're linking the fact that you've got all these multimillion-dollar second homes to the exacerbation of the affordable housing process or problem in the community. And everybody wants to get tough about that. But if you actually adopted the true fee, it would make you an outlier. Because it would have to be, like in Aspen, I think it was like two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a house. And that would make you an outlier, right, for a lot of things. So they come back on those, right? And so a lot of times, we just call that, you know, what is the politically acceptable number? But unless, I mean, we, and we, you know, we've done fees where we've said, in fact, we've just did one right, or we're working on one right now in Homestead, Florida, where they're telling us that the cost of land to buy parks is a million dollars an acre. And as a result of that, their park fee alone is fifteen thousand dollars. And there's not a park fee in Florida that is close to fifteen thousand dollars. And we are advising them that maybe you shouldn't do this or maybe you should back off on this number because when you add that fifteen thousand dollar park fee to everything else that you have, you're going to be here and all of your neighbors are going to be here, right? So that's, we do do that kind of education in terms of letting folks know that there could be some economic consequences as a result of this. And normally, they back off.
Well, in terms of forecasting, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you said you had based the ten-year study on seven hundred and fifty homes a year for ten years?
But I think Mr. Arrowood is saying, are we forecasting increases in housing prices, income? And where's that, when does the fee become, you know, in elastic? Or what's the elasticity of demand relative to incomes, housing prices, and the fee amounts? Is that correct?
Yeah, okay, okay.
If I may add something, just because it wasn't brought up, but I know it's going to be something that is going to be asked of y'all, of me at one point. But the, specifically in the South Carolina statute, it calls out the impact to affordable housing. Their projected impact of affordable housing is two-tenths of a percent for rental occupied homes and six-tenths of a percent for owner occupied homes. So it's less than one percent for both owner occupied and rental occupied with the maximum supportable fee. And I think that's just an important thing to consider as we move forward on this as well. Because there is a nexus at that point, Mr. Arrowood, to your point of, is there, is a deterrent? Is this fee a deterrent? But if you look at it from a pure affordable housing standpoint, if we're less than, less than one percent impact, I think we're okay.
But in that same vein, if this council chose or a future council chose to make concessions in some other regard, I know we can't do it within the impact fee because that has to be equal all the way through. But there would be the ability for the council to, for true affordable housing, to make some sort of concessions in that regard?
Yes, sir.
Communities do that?
There is a cap, there is a section in the act that addresses affordable housing and exemptions. You could also, you know, I think you need to have a, you need to be, you know, we want to keep you out of court. So we always sort of err on the side of being conservative. And best practices are that if you were to waive, let's say, four hundred thousand dollars in fees for an affordable housing project, you'd have to make up that revenue from another source. Or we've also seen communities, you know, that are trying to, that may be retail poor and are trying to attract additional retail. And so they have a program where they rebate the retail impact fees and make it up through another source in order to make the program whole. So you can do things like that.
Okay, thank you. Others?
Are there opportunities on the business license side to do that?
I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head.
Or the assessment of the house, you know, potentially. I mean, if it was more affordable and lowered, it obviously wouldn't be assessed as high of a rate and the tax rate wouldn't, or the-
Well, I think the assessment side is the assessment side. That's going to be static. I think the business license side of it could be something that programmatically y'all could do. But just remember, again, this is found money, which is going to provide us breathing room in our regular operating budget. So if y'all programmatically decide, hey, we need to do something for affordable housing, well, then there theoretically would be money in the general fund to begin a program of that type. This is just an additional revenue source that's going specific to-
Well, yeah, and the state just allowed hospitality tax funds to be used for affordable housing. So, I mean, you know, there are other avenues to do.
In a housing project, okay, they're building fifty or a hundred homes. Does that mean per home, five thousand?
Yes, ma'am. If council adopts the total fee, the total allowable fee at five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars for fifty homes, that's two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for that neighborhood and impact fees.
Does the developer pay that? Who pays the fee?
It's whoever pulls the building permit.
Whoever pulls the building permit.
They cannot start construction until they pay the-
They can begin, as soon as they start doing it per lots, that's when they come in to get the building permit per lot. That's when they can do it. They can grade and do those other things. But as soon as those lots start, they pull the individual permit for the house, that's when the fee is due. So it's just part of the permit fee.
So it would be as they went down the line and built one house, five thousand, or the house, five thousand, it's not like a-
They don't stroke a check the day y'all annexed and owned it.
Right, okay, okay.
And how long does it take to adopt this?
This is two readings of an ordinance.
And it has to go through the planning commission first. Planning commission passes a resolution forwarding it on to the council.
Because it's a land development regulation, right?
Yeah, and actually, South Carolina is the only act that requires that you go to the planning commission, interestingly enough.
I know that the forecast is, South Carolina, that's, everybody's coming here in basically two parts of the state, upstate, coast. And we're in the center of the upstate. But if we, if we were to get into an economy where it wasn't a recession, but it was just lackluster, you know, we've got one percent growth and not just for a year. But can, are these fees adjustable every twelve months? Like, I mean, can, can they be, if we started to see an impact, if we knew, yes, if we started to see a negative impact?
I don't know of any legal reason you couldn't amend the ordinance. As long as you don't exceed the maximum allowable fee, you've got flexibility underneath that.
Okay, okay. And how, and one other, Reno is here. On this, the maximum supportable fee of, not industrial, eleven hundred dollars and that's per how many square feet?
Per thousand square feet. So basically, it's a dollar ten per square foot.
Can you use that as a development tool? If we were trying to, if we were competing for a client to locate their business inside the city in that delta number that Reno always likes to bring up, can that be, can you work with that somehow?
You would have to just offset the fee through some other program.
Ah, I got you.
Fee's the fee's the fee. The expectation is this collected.
I got you.
If you want to incent through some other method, that's council prerogative.
Got you, got you.
From an implementation standpoint, do these only apply to like new construction? So like new construction, retail, office?
Yes, sir.
So if I want to renovate a home, not necessarily apply to that?
Sure.
Okay.
Others, let's look to wrap it up. Questions, comments, discussion?
Jumping off his question, if you are expanding, say, an industrial plant, and you're going to add a hundred thousand square feet, is that just considered a-
That's, you would pay another impact fee.
So to his point, what if he decides to add on a thousand square feet in addition to his home?
If the residential fees are calculated per- Because the residential fees are calculated per unit, and the non-residential are per thousand square feet.
Got you.
And when most people are expanding the house, like when I, you know, I expanded my kitchen and turned my garage into a living room, right, it wasn't to have more people in the house, right? But when you make an expansion like that, you're going to generate X number of employees and X number of vehicle trips and et cetera, et cetera.
Sure.
Last call. Well, with that, I will call the, the meeting to a close. We thank you for your time and effort in this regard, and appreciate the quick trip, and thanks for coming in tonight. With that, then, we will close our workshop.